Good evening and welcome to the February ten, two thousand and twenty-two fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-three proposed operating budget public hearing. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices and mute your microphones to avoid any technical interference with our meeting. Also, we will be using Zoom's Spanish interpretation services this evening. Please listen to the following announcement regarding interpretation services during tonight's meeting.
Interpreting Services, Servicios de Interpretación. Simultaneous interpretation is available in Spanish. La Interpretación Simultánea está disponible en español. On a computer at the bottom of the screen will be an interpretation globe. Click that globe and then select Spanish. En una computadora, en la parte baja de la pantalla habrá un globo de interpretación. Haga clic en ese globo y seleccione Spanish. On a mobile device at the bottom of the screen, tap the ellipses icon on the bottom right. Three dots. Tap Language Interpretation. Tap Spanish. En un dispositivo móvil, en la parte baja de la pantalla, toca el icono de elipses en la parte baja de la derecha. Dos tres puntos. Toque Language Interpretation. Toque Spanish. Thank you. Gracias.
Gracias. Again, good evening, everyone, and before giving opening remarks, I'd like to publicly acknowledge the recent announcement of the resignations of two of our colleagues, Board Member Rahila Ahmed and Board Member Belinda Queen. As this will be their final meeting with the full Board of Education. On behalf of my colleagues, I would like to thank them for their service to their respective districts, as well as the entire student body, employee workforce, and constituency of Prince George's County Public Schools. Now, I will move into the purpose of this meeting tonight. And it is convened for the sole purpose of receiving public comments on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three operating budget. Before we begin receiving our comments from the public, I would like to review our budget timeline. The Board of Education is scheduled to adopt its fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three proposed operating budget at its February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two public board meeting. The Board of Education's recommended budget will then be forwarded to the county executive, who will develop her proposed county budget and present it to the county council in March, two thousand and twenty-two. In April, the Maryland State Legislature adopts its final budget, including amounts for school funding. The county council must adopt its budget for Prince George's County by the end of May. The Board of Education, as necessary, reconciles its budget to the county's approved budget and approves it at a regularly scheduled meeting in June, two thousand and twenty-two. With that, I'm going to ask Ms. Berkeley, please call the role.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Adam Stafford? Mrs. Ahmed?
Here.
Mrs. Adam Stafford? Mrs. Boozer Strather?
Here.
Mr. Saran Ruiz? Mr. Harris? Mrs. Mickens Murray?
Here.
Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mrs. Queen?
Present.
Mr. Thomas? Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Miller?
Present. So we have a quorum, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Adam Stafford? No? Okay. Thank you.
Did you, did you hear her?
No, ma'am.
Her name is showing up, so... Well, she's on the screen. We'll move forward. Mr. Hertzmann from the Budget, the Chief of Budget, will, you please introduce your present, give your presentation of the budget.
Just one second. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. In the previous two Board of Education public budget hearings, administration has discussed how the state funding allocations in the governor's proposed budget have left us with a significant budget deficit. Tonight, we'll outline exactly how we have arrived at the current budget deficit of eighty-point-four million dollars. Then we will delineate a recommended plan for eliminating that deficit and balancing the budget. Beginning with the budget deficit, one of the primary places that our analysis disagrees with the governor's proposed budget is on the education effort adjustment. This is an additional state allocation in the blueprint legislation for accountable boards where the county government has met certain local fund match requirements. Prince George's County has met all of the requirements to receive the appropriation. Since the blueprint was enacted and before, all information is stated that this allocation was for FY two thousand and twenty-three. That is very clear in state law and in every state projection that we've seen. The educational, education article in section five dash two-three-nine states that this allocation exists in FY two thousand and twenty-three. Likewise, the blueprint legislation in the fiscal notes say that this allocation exists in FY twenty-three. For Department of Legislative Services fiscal estimate, fiscal fact estimates show a projected allocation to Prince George's County of thirty-two million dollars for FY twenty-three. Should be noted that according to these DLS allocations, two districts are entitled to ninety-six percent of this statewide funding. The two districts that would receive that money are Prince George's County and Baltimore City before this funding was eliminated in the budget. When the CEO's proposed budget was developed, we assumed that the state budget would comply with the state law and therefore we included initial estimate of twenty-five million dollars in the CEO's proposed budget. However, per the preliminary state aid memo released two weeks ago, the funding was not included in FY two thousand and twenty-three. The reason for this was, and we've quoted it here, "Definition requires two years of data, which will not be available until FY two thousand and twenty-four." Therefore, the governor's allowance does not include funding for this program. We strongly disagree with this statement. In fact, we already have all the data necessary to calculate the exact dollar value. That amount is twenty-seven million, five-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy dollars. Before the pandemic, our documentation of free and reduced price meal eligibility was consistent. Our farms rates were steadily increasing year by year. When the pandemic hit, the USDA stopped requiring that families complete paperwork to show that their children were income eligible for free and reduced price meals. While this was an excellent policy that ensured that children would receive free meals during a difficult time, did have one unintended negative consequence. Many families nationwide really stopped completing the paperwork because their children received the meals without it. This school year, we received sixteen thousand fewer applications than we did two years ago. That doesn't mean that there's fewer children in poverty in our county. If anything, that number of low-income families likely increased during the pandemic. Just means that fewer families are completing the applications. This is important from the financial side to the district because one of our largest state funding sources is compensation, sorry, is compensation education or comp ed, a compensatory education. This calculation is based on a per pupil amount multiplied by the number of completed applications. So we have more than sixty thousand students that should be counted but are not being counted. The federal government has recognized the significance of this issue nationwide and has allowed school systems to use FY twenty counts for title grant eligibility. They enacted a, the state also recognized that there's an issue here, but they enacted a hold harmless the previous year, which was already during the pandemic, and at that point, we already had a reduction of eleven thousand applications of those sixteen thousand from the prior year. We're so focused on this right now because the interpretation of this formula and specifically using just this year's data results in forty-four million dollars less in revenue to PGCPS for next year. And this one is specifically intended for a high-need student group. In addition to the educational effort and comp ed, which come for nearly ninety percent of the overall differences between our projections and the state projections, there are other places where we had smaller discrepancies totaling eight million dollars in total. So those are all the revenue differences in the current budget deficit. There is one area where we are recommending adding to the expenditure budget as well. Substitute teachers, as we all know, play a critical role in our school system. Right now, our pay rates for substitutes are not as competitive as we would like to be. We need to raise them to ensure that we're able to consistently attract high-quality, highly qualified substitute teachers that will help educate our students and provide temporary relief to our full-time educators. The CEO's original budget proposal did include an additional two million dollars to increase substitute teacher salary. With recent enhancements and other surrounding jurisdictions, we recognize that this is no longer sufficient. We are proposing allocate an additional four-point-one million dollars to make us very highly competitive. Following these changes, we would pay the highest substitute teacher rate of all of the nearby districts as we have outlined here. The three revenue adjustments and the additional funding for substitute teachers places our budget deficit at eighty-point-four million dollars. Next, I'll outline the CEO's recommendation for closing again. First, it is clear that the elimination of the educational effort adjustment was an error. We are hopeful that the governor or General Assembly will recognize this error and will allocate the legally required amount of twenty-seven-point-six million dollars before this budget cycle ends. Second, administration recognizes, excuse me, administration recognizes that almost share in budget reductions. We're committed to identifying additional two million dollars in central office reductions for this cycle. Central offices have taken the brunt of the reductions over the last three years as we have right-sized budgets and attempted to keep cuts away from schools. Third, we have identified specific discretionary expenditures currently budgeted within the general unrestricted fund that could be reprogrammed to grants for FY two thousand and twenty-three. These specific grants do not have a supplement, not supplant requirement. These are places where we are doing things that are allowable within the specific grant requirements and don't have that supplanting rule. Fourth, we'll make an early payment on our other post-employment benefits liability contribution. This requires us to identify and transfer through financial review that will come to the Board of Education, a total of fifteen million dollars that will not be spent at the end of the fiscal year. Excuse me. We've done this for the last two years as a final measure to reconcile the budget deficit in June. We're hopeful that we could get back to a more stable timeline for FY twenty-three, but this amount once again needs to be moved. Last two items on here, school budget adjustments and additional use of fund balance will be discussed in more detail the next two slides. As you're aware, overall student enrollment was rising until the pandemic and has decreased over the last two years. Specifically, this year, our enrollment has decreased by two-point-five percent. While we are enacting plans to bring back students for next year, the decreases do impact our state and county funding. Our allocations are largely based on per pupil amounts. The CEO's proposed operating budget, we plan to increase the overall student-based budgeting dollars by twenty-five-point-seven million dollars for FY two thousand and twenty-three despite the enrollment decrease. That amount was intended primarily to ensure that resources increase in alignment with salary increases. However, with this budget deficit and the enrollment decline, we're forced to adjust this. Instead of increasing the budget by four-point-five percent as enrollment falls, we will increase the budget still, but just by three percent or seventeen-point-two million. The final reconciliation area is additional use of our general fund balance. Each year that we have a gap between our budget revenue and expenditures, be his general fund balance to eliminate that difference. Government and county standards board statement number fifty-four or GASB fifty-four is the primary guidance for fund balance reporting. Under that pronouncement, we have strict rules that allow us to commit amounts already, amounts available as of the last day of the fiscal year, the budget for the following fiscal year. This creates a risk as we assign a single depleting source of funding to a recurring issue. At the end of FY two thousand and nineteen, we moved a fairly modest amount, twenty-eight million dollars, into the budget for FY twenty-twenty. Since then, we have increased that amount each year and are now proposing the use of one-hundred-three million dollars in FY twenty-twenty-three. Year-over-year increase in committed fund balance is indicative of an impending structural deficit. We've already moved past standards and really cannot afford to commit additional fund balance beyond this recommended level. The eighty-point-four million dollar budget deficit is comprised, as discussed, excuse me, of the three changes to revenue and the increases in substitute teacher pay rates. This recommended reconciliation includes the assumption that the state will correct the educational effort adjustment, centralized reductions, budget reprogramming to restricted funds, early payment within the current fiscal year, school funding adjustments, additional use of fund balance. Those items fully reconcile the eighty-point-four million dollar budget deficit. Thank you for your attention and yield back to the board chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hertzmann. We will now hear from twenty registered speakers for the public comments. This is the board's opportunity to hear from the community, so board members will not address any comments now. You will have three minutes to address the board. At the end of your time, you may complete that sentence only. You may not relinquish any part of your speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public comment process to move smoothly. Our first registered speaker for this evening is Jade Mason, twelfth-grade student, Save Community Space Classroom. Jade?
She's not in our queue.
Okay, moving on. Elijah Mudd, twelfth-grade student, The Budget.
Also not in the queue.
Anthony Jacinto, twelfth-grade student, Saving Community-Based Classroom. He's on.
Yes, ma'am.
Anthony?
Hello, my name is Anthony Jacinto. I am a student of Community-Based Classroom. I wanted to speak for the closure of the school. I wanted to give a couple of my reasons for not closing it. One of the many reasons that I have for it are of it allowing students second chances for graduation, even for those who did not have the right mindset or had complications with things such as having families. One of my other reasons is due to, due to a giving college-type classes or college-type hours for those who are either working late or working in the morning. Excuse me. Another one of my reasons is for a giving smaller school settings. As for some students, they would not be able to get the proper help that they would need if they were in traditional school settings with larger classes. Another thing, another reason that I have is because of traditional high schools giving more classes that are not needed for graduation. It can actually stress some students out. It can actually raise consequences for mental health issues. That is simply all that I wanted to say. Thank you for your time. I encourage you to please not to close down CBC. It is a really great school. It helps a lot of students out with their education, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacinto. Salima Zessina Ramirez, twelfth-grade student, Saving CBC. And we will have an interpreter for her. Is she in the queue?
She is actually not in the queue.
Okay, we'll move to Savannah Manley. She is, I see her name.
Yeah.
Ms. Manley?
Hi, good evening. My name is Savannah Manley, and I attend Community-Based Classroom School. Last week, I was here begging you on how to shut our school down, and now I'm here to address some unpleasant issues. Saving our school is an issue that we support from the bottom of our hearts, and you cannot put a price tag on learning. Combining our schools may seem like it's in our best entrance, but what about the students who cannot learn in large classes? Who need extra help because they have a hard time learning like other students? If you were the parent of one of the students and they were experiencing difficulties in their home-based schools, how would you feel? Would you want your child to leave an environment they're successful in because of budget cuts and throwback into a school they were struggling in? Everyone learned in a different place. Many of us have different learning styles, and Community-Based School has given us the opportunity that some of us have never experienced in the past. Not only do we have students that learn differently, but we also have teachers who teach differently in a way that is easily understood and help us and is always acceptable. There is nowhere you can put us that would give us the same opportunity and assistance. My classmates and I are devastated at the thought of Community-Based Classroom closing or merging with another school. We are affected because we, we are graduating, but we think of what CBC has done for us, and we can't help but think, what about the others who do that come after us? Coming before you, asking you again to put, to place it in your hearts to do right by us. Show us that you value us. Show us that you are not worried about money, but you're worried about us and our learning. Thank you for your sign.
Thank you, Ms. Manley. Symphony Gibson, twelfth-grade student, Saving CBC.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening to you all. My name is Symphony Gibson. Once again, I am coming to you pleading that you do not close Community-Based Classroom. This school has provided a tremendous amount of well-needed support, both academically and mentally, for me as well as my classmates. We are all in agreement that this school has given us a chance like no other school has given to us. If you haven't actually been to our, if you ask, if you actually haven't been in our school to see how it functions, it would be very difficult to understand why we are asking you not to close our school. This school provides us with so many opportunities to be successful, just when we had thought about giving up on high school. Community-Based Classroom students have already created plans for the future students. For example, we are establishing SGA, Students Government Association. I have already done my speech to vote for a secretary position in the SGA. If CBC is closed, then we will not be able to carry out those plans. There again, we would feel as if we have not been successful in our endeavors. Hopefully, most of you, as parents, can empathize with our determination to keep the school open. This school serves a large and diverse community, and if the school closes, it affects all of us in our futures. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Sean Johnson, twelfth-grade student, Closing CBC. Sean Johnson.
He's not in the queue.
Okay, Gerda Theodore, twelfth-grade student, Saving CBC.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, well, you can speak a little louder.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Gerda Theodore, and I'm a senior at Community-Based Classroom School. I come before you again, asking you to consider our plea to not close down CBC. I want you to think about what will happen to the students attending this school and the ones planning to enroll for the coming school year. If my understanding is correct, the plan is to combine our school with Tall Oaks. I can't say anything bad about Tall Oaks because I do not know that school as such. I can only say that based on my understanding that several things will take place as a result of this. I have been successful in this environment because the classes were small and I felt very comfortable being in the class. There was no fear of giving the wrong answer, and the majority of the class saw humor in it. As I said before, CBC has given me much hope, a future to look to, and an opportunity to make many friends facing the same problems that I face. The difference is, at CBC, I was given extended time and assistance until I felt comfortable with the assignment. I know that maybe many of you might feel that we have no knowledge of the budget, and for many, that might be true. However, I don't claim to be professional in knowing the budget, Ivy. But I believe that priority must be placed on keeping CBC. Its performance speaks for itself. I will be thrilled to learn that next year our school will still be in existence. We will still have caring staff, small classrooms, and the services offers that we have had the opportunity to receive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Theodore. Sarah Schoffler, English teacher, Do Not Remove CBC From Budget.
Good evening. Nationally, schools have struggled to provide high-quality alternative education in this country. What is such a conundrum to me is that PGCPS has built five incredibly strong alternative schools, but wants to reorganize and condense them. The recipe for success in alternative schools is the separation of the grade levels. Older students have more mature environments, and the younger students learn to grow into maturity with their peers. Creating these nine-through-twelve hub schools will be disastrous, as the younger students will be yet another learning barrier for the older students and vice versa. This county should be promoting the success of these schools, not shutting them down. It's all in the data. All of our alternative high schools have had graduation rates in the eightieth and ninetieth percentiles, and students singing their praises while neighboring counties who have moved to this hub school program have disastrously low graduation rates with miserable students. When it is said that the goal of this new program is to enhance support and improve programs, again, I say, what are these new schools providing that we are not? We have mental health services, and as far as providing transportation, my fifth- and sixth-year seniors call school buses the cheese bus. There is no way eighteen-to-twenty-year-olds that are already on the verge of dropping out are hopping on a cheese bus to Bowie to go to school. As Belinda Queen says, I'm just keeping it real. It has been stated that nothing is being taken away from our students. Well, let's look at edgenuity that has clearly been identified as one of the curriculums of the new program. CBC tried edgenuity once. Students would not, could not, and did not get the immense amount of work done. We had to pull students from their other classes and literally spoon-feed them their work, and after all that, a third of the class still failed the course and could not graduate in May with their peers. So CBC does not have edgenuity as an option because we know it doesn't work. Instead, we have live teachers in a classroom teaching our students in evening classes so that they can get the support and motivation they need to graduate. In the midst of a nation at crisis with alternative education, CBC has managed to successfully build a community of learners with graduation attendance rates consistently in the ninetieth percentile year after year. Alternative education have been seen, has been seen as the ugly stepchild of the school system for years. In two thousand and fifteen, CBC had a graduating class of a hundred-and-twenty-five students. Since then, the shift in our county to keep students in their base schools pressuring administration not to send students to alternative schools, and a pandemic has lowered enrollment. Many students don't even know our school exists as an option. You can bet that if CBC had the proper support and an equal budget to that of its similarly structured alternative schools, it would have classrooms of fifteen students or more every year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Schoffler. Xena Whitworth, Individual, CSTEM for Underrepresented Youth. Ms. Whitworth, please unmute. Okay, can you hear me? Yes, I can now. All right. Peace and purpose, everyone. Ahmed and Board Member Ahmed and Queen, thank you for your service and the fight for teachers and students. I'm very sad to hear this news tonight. Your presence will and voice will be missed. I pray whoever takes your place will be as faithful and dedicated to the fight of all things right. I am very sad at this moment, and we, the people, have to depend on the rest of the board to decide the fate of alternative schools for at-risk youth. Thank you, Board Member Adams, for having the courage to stand up and fight for what is right and righteous. Every day I wake up and I say the Lord's Prayer, give him thanks, and then I take a shower and recite the Twenty-third Psalms. My favorite verse is, "Jade, do I walk through the valley of the shadow of death?" I will fear no-
My favorite verse is, "Jade, I walk through the valley of the shadow of death. I will fear no evil, but thou art with me, thy rod and thy staff, they comfort me." Thou prepares a table before me in the presence of my enemies. Who are the enemies of education? Systemic racist institutions such as public schools that are designed to miseducate all involved. Every time I sign up, I want to speak on a wonderful program called CSTEM. A hands-on project-based learning with a competitive edge. Students need more, more than book and pencil learning. They need purpose. They need hands-on. They need application. CSTEM was a program in the county that proved to be successful for underrepresented, underserved youth, special ed and ESOL students, the forgotten ones. A program like CSTEM would be in all schools in order to compete against other schools in the district. Learning should be fun and purposeful. Once again, a group fight broke out in school today. Do you see the connection? The excessively dangerous fight that are current in our overcrowded traditional schools is because social distancing is impossible. Did you see the news coverage? Are you aware of the number of employees who are becoming injured due to fights? Further, the associate superintendent for high schools has for years since 2015 not supported alternative schools, has not worked to dis, and has worked to dismantle them before sneaking them out of the budget by pressuring school administrators to not send students to alternative schools, but to instead enroll them in online edgenuity and their traditional schools. The traditional schools enroll the students into online edgenuity and the majority of the students do not log on to take the course. Thus, they do not earn the credits needed to graduate. Have you reviewed the horrifically poor edgenuity pass rate data? This is not by accident. Again, do you see the plot and scheme? I've experienced loss of Tomellans tomorrow, Northwestern, Crossland High School, CSTEM, and now CBC. After twenty-five years of teaching, twelve years of a student, twenty-four years between my two kids, twenty-four years with my siblings, and I can't count the countless years of my family members. I have no faith in this board, the union, the CEO, the government. At this point, I'm asking for a buyout. Buy me out. I have five more years. Could you please, for the love of Christ, buy me out so I can just go away in peace and not have to be subject to all of these evilness that's happening in this county? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitworth. Amity Pope, individual, schools FTEs.
Thank you, Board, thank you, Board Chair Dr. Miller and esteemed members of the Board of Education, I see you, Dr. Golson. I'm gonna, I don't know, I hear music in the background. All right, I'm gonna cut right to it. Increase the number of personnel in the office of certification. Frustrated teachers leave the system in an office of six or seven, definitely under ten people for over thirteen thousand employees. It's not cutting it. We'd like for you all to find a way to stop the bullying of admin with unit one employees. This is one of the reasons for the massive teacher shortage and revolving door to teachers in and out. I mean, I once heard a wise woman say, "You cannot teach someone to care." They either do or they don't. Let's find a way to exit admin that exhibit those qualities out so we can retain the best and brightest that we have and maybe even re-recruit those that have left. Outside consulting companies with curriculum and some programs, et cetera, usually probably come with a big price tag associated. Let's reinvest in our national board teachers and use their expertise that is put through the eye of the needle every ten years. They are the most expert in their area of expertise and their areas of expertise vary in arenas throughout education. This can support being fiscally responsible with our budget. It is time to move full steam ahead with indicators in the strategic plan regarding modernizing our practices to be equitable and work plans for all staff in ways that work versus looking at everything as having to be fair, which is actually being inequitable and negligent with IDA requirements. These things like this cost the system greatly when folks go out on extended leave because diverse abilities aren't taken into consideration or maybe not even seriously for fear of not being or looking fair. In closing, we need more CBCs throughout this district to provide the na, the na nurture, respect, and care to students who need are best suited and thriving in this model, as you very well heard tonight and through other nights. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pope. Jana Parker, individual, the budget.
Ms. Parker is not in the queue.
Michelle Clark, individual, recruiting and maintaining a high-quality workforce.
Ms. Clark is also not in the queue.
Sherman Hardy, individual, CBC.
Yes, good evening and thank you all for having me. I don't plan to be before you much long. On this day in this month, I'm reminded of the many hurdles that African-Americans endured to get an education in the past and the obstacles we still face. Over the past week, I listened to the rallying cries of many who have had hurdles placed in their way and like Olympians overcame. I come today for all the jades who are told they shouldn't be seen nor heard. Today, I lend my voice to your cause because I see CBC matters. The impact cannot be mistaken. The data speaks for itself. Ninety-five percent graduated and ninety-three percent attended. CBC caters to those who are torn down and discarded by society, yet through their efforts, faith and hope fills the barrels of despair. Many other people who have spoke shared how last chances became new opportunities. On the calls, I've witnessed professionals who work at CBC express their Kendrick spirits, existing through shared experiences and from what I can tell, actually give a damn. Yet I too am disappointed with the budget shortfall and the inability to save programs that are actually working. Perhaps we could have saved money by keeping our focus on the children and not personal issues that led to lawsuits. Maybe the county would have had money to spare had it not been for the current administration paying twenty-four million dollars on the lawsuit. But why stop there? The governor should have sent some of those extra dollars he was throwing around to scale up policing and giving tax breaks. Plain as day, I see where the priority of funding is going, and although I call it the PPP, mine is a different version. It is pu, public schools, private schools, and the prisons. And we have got to stop overfunding two out of the three. But CBC, look no further because Hardy is on the case. You may not see in my hand, but I have a list of the most highly-paid people in Prince George's County. I found your one-point-five-million dollars. Didn't have to search high, didn't have to search low. Cutting fifteen thousand dollars from the most bloated county salaries could have paid the way for your school to continue. Because if we are asking for the children and the young adults to sacrifice for growth, then everyone must join in this sacrifice. We must share this burden equally. In the words of OT Genesis, "Go get the money." You have a choice before you and we are watching.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Marilyn Fitzpatrick, individual, proposed budget save CBC.
That person is also not in queue.
Philomena Owens, Owana, individual, resources, technology.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Philomena Owana, Owana, three syllables, please. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Golson, educators, students, and community stakeholders. My name is Philomena Owana. I work at Maya Angelou French Immersion, IB World School. I taught in the surrounding district over twenty years ago and at that school we had a TV production program. Those students won several awards for television production regionally. As a student at Kettering Middle School, my son also had a TV production class and they also won several awards. At Maya Angelou, we have no such programs nor the facility to start one. When our middle school students graduate, for example, they go to Central High School. Again, that is not a dedicated space for the French immersion program. Two of our middle schoolers who graduated from Central High School that came from Maya Angelou were valedictorian. Today I want to highlight that our second graders had the opportunity to speak live to NASA astronauts who were in space and had the opportunity to ask them questions. We are talking about budget. We are talking about technology. We need technology. We have been talking about this for a long time. Especially in the elementary schools, the children, the students have computers that do, that are not durable. Those Chromebooks are not durable and they're, and they need covers to protect them from getting damaged. Some of the parents cannot afford the fees that they have to pay when the computers are damaged. So please consider having a durable technology or providing computer covers for our students' technology. I know I've said this so many times and it really bears repeating. I do want to thank our area director who contacted me, but the issues in my classroom about the no heat still persist and I'm not the only classroom that is suffering this issue. So many, many, many other schools and educators are going through this. Our students are worth so much. You know, I, I don't know how much to tell you. You know this. We love these students. We are giving everything for them. But we also need budgets to really reflect that priority. Budget to show that, you know, we need the technology we are talking about. We need a dedicated space. I know the budget next year cannot provide a school building magically, but I really want you to please consider thinking about providing for us a new space. Again, I really thank you. This is African-American reading. Please read a story, a book to a child. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owana.
Thank you.
Next, Leah, Leah Batts, individual, saving CBC. Ms. Batts. Next, Carolyn Jaeger, individual, alternative education.
Carolyn. Yes, pardon me. I'm here.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, honorable board members, Dr. Golson and other valuable stakeholders. I am Carolyn Alita Jaeger, a blessed educator at Tall Oaks High School for over a decade where every day is new and beautiful to me. I love what I do and I am truly here to serve. The time is always right. The great community-based classroom is located on five-one-five-zero Annapolis Road in Bladensburg, Maryland. And the amazing Tall Oaks High School is located on two-one-one-two Church Road in Bowie, Maryland. They have served the needs of our communities for decades. Our graduation rates speak for themselves. And again, our alumni, as you have heard over the past few weeks from their own mouths, are in, are rep-
Ms. Jaeger. Ms. Jaeger, unmute yourself. We have to move to the next.
Always right. As you travel down Church Road in Bowie, you will see on the Tall Oaks High School's marquee a profound quote by the phenomenal Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. that states, "The time is always right to do what is right." I respectfully employ each one of you that has the authority to make the decisions relevant to not closing community-based classroom and merging Tall Oaks High School with Annapolis Road Academy to reconsider for the numerous reasons that have been previously mentioned this evening by prior speakers and pride and prior days, which I will not rehash at this time. Again, the time is always right to do what is right. To those of you who have visited Tall Oaks and CBC, thank you for traveling to see us and what we do and how we do it. Remember, as you determine the fate of our wonderful act-risk population, now and in the years to come, the time is always right to do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jaeger.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Theodore Trice, Tall Oaks and CBCBA catalyst.
Mr. Trice is not in our queue.
Danee Johnson, proposed operating budget.
Good evening, board members, CEO, community members. My name is Danee Johnson. I'm here representing the Alliance to Reclaim Our Schools or ARROS. I'm a parent, an advocate, and a public education proponent. We must invest in our efforts wisely. Educators has, have come to realize that you can't punish a child into doing anything. Have we come to that realization yet? Instead of simply instituting harsh punishment, we need to teach students the kind of skills that will help them improve their behavior. First, we need to model the behavior that we want to see in our students. That includes being respectful, patient, and being armed with knowledge. We must invest in our efforts wisely. Restorative practices represent a positive step forward in helping students to learn to resolve disagreements, take ownership of their behavior, and engage in acts of empathy and forgiveness. Most importantly, restorative practices build relationships that were once broken. We must invest in our efforts wisely. Maryland Board State requires that certified school personnel who have direct contact with students complete training each year on skills that include recognizing student behavioral health issues, student trauma, and supporting student in needs, in supporting student needs in community schools. But that training isn't enough. We must invest in our efforts wisely. The train and hope model is definitely a training model that will not work when it comes to training educators in restorative practices. We can't possibly think that providing staff with a few hours of training or even one or two days with no follow-up, coaching, or demonstration that will make restorative practice programs successful in schools. We must invest in efforts wisely. More educator training is needed in restorative practices. Additional support staff that are training restorative practices needs to be hired. For our students to be responsible and productive citizens of the world, we must arm them with the ability to think critically, solve problems, and work collaboratively, collaboratively with others. As adults, we know the importance of working well with others. It's always critical, a critical element on your performance rating at your job, works well with others. Our children's future successes depend not only on successful academic career, but also on their capacity to engage successfully with others. Implementing a meaningful restorative practice program will ultimately help our students. We must invest our efforts wisely. Please invest in restorative practices in Prince George's County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Berkeley, did anyone else show up?
Yes, we have Ms. Ms. Batts. We got her back.
Oh, okay, Ms. Batts.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. My name is Leah Batts. I am a retired educator from Prince George's County after forty years of teaching English. I also substituted for nine years following my retirement. And then in addition to that, I did thirty years of alternative education at the night school. So I'm speaking on behalf of keeping CBC open. For one reason, CBC is a perfect location. It's very close. It's not too far north, too far south, right in the middle. So that location is one that we really can benefit from. Now, some of our most vulnerable kids attend CBC and they have left the regular school for many reasons. Reasons such as they have lost focus, they have lost hope. Some of them cannot prioritize. The classes are so large. Some of these students can't handle the routine of regular school. Some have gotten in trouble and have gotten put out of regular school. Their home situations and obligations that are so overwhelming that the students can't seem to cope. The distractions are just too great in the regular school setting. Now, these kids are the most vulnerable and they need special care. They need extra care. The care that they may not be receiving in regular school, but they can and do receive this care at CBC. Now, if you were to close CBC, it would be like shutting off a ventilator for those who need to breathe, and these are students who need to breathe. If you were to close CBC, it would be like shutting down a hospital for those who need healing. And these students need healing. And if you were to close CBC, it would be like shutting down the church. And if you were to close CBC, it would be like shutting down the church where people get saved. And these are students who really need sa- saving. CBC is a place where our most vulnerable kids are getting another chance, not just a second chance, because they get second chances in regular school, but they are getting another chance, and they need as many chances as they possibly can, as they possibly can get before going into the prison system and being swallowed up in that world of crime. As you listen to the news every day, you hear how many young people are being swallowed up because they are drifting away from the education and just drifting into crime. So we need to save our kids. And for the same reasons that CBC was opened initially are the same reasons that we should keep CBC open.
Thank you, Ms. Batts. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time out to express your concerns. This concludes the comments from the public on our budget hearing. Uh, the next steps will be that we will conclude the February tenth, twenty-twenty-two, twenty, FY twenty-twenty-three operating budget public hearing. Again, I thank you for your participation, and in closing, I want to again thank, uh, Board Member Queen and Board Member Ahmed for your service. You will be missed. Well, you'll be missed from the board. I'll just say that. Just saying. Uh, and again, thank you, uh, everyone. Um, so have a great evening, and a reminder, just in case, our February twenty-fourth meeting will be in person. We are scheduled to meet in person on February twenty-fourth at the Sasser Building. Good night and be safe.
Good night, everybody.